Okay, just started the recording is just getting started. So just give us just about 10 seconds, 10, 15 seconds and we'll be ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, we should be ready to go, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, hello, everybody. This is the special meeting. Call it to order here. The special city council meeting at 5:00 PM on Monday, November 16. And may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Hubbard. I see her. Jody, your, our Councilmember Hubbard, your microphone is muted. She is present. I do see her here. Councilmember Mosca.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cranz.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Henze.
Here.
And Mayor Blakespear.
Here.
Record will show all members of the city council are present.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and go to oral communications.
Okay, we have, let me see if our attendees are in yet. It doesn't look like any of the attendees are in yet, so.
All right, well, we can come back to them. Why don't we go ahead and have our staff report and then we'll go to our oral comments? Oh, I think maybe it just went live. I got a notice. Do you think I should repeat the information?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Or I can just say that the medium was called to order and it was noted that all members of the city council are present.
Okay, and also I'll just repeat what this meeting is for anybody watching it. So it's the special city council meeting at 5:00 PM on Monday, November 16, 2020.
Okay, I'm on.
And it looks like you have four attendees now.
Yeah, they're slowly coming on. It has four, three of them are loaded. I'm just waiting for the others. So it's up to you if you want to let them all get loaded or if you want to go ahead and start calling them to speak. What would you like to do, Mayor?
If there are public speakers who put their name in and you see them, let's go ahead and call on them.
So our first speaker is Barbara Murray. Barbara, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Barbara, you have three minutes. You can start when you're ready.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Blakespear, council members and staff, if you're there. My name is Barbara Murray. I've been a resident of Cardiff since 1986. I'd like to congratulate first the mayor and council members who have recently won reelection. I hope this council will continue its hard work in furthering the interests of all the citizens of Encinitas. Tonight's topic is a huge one, as is apparent to anyone who's attempted to wade through all the associated documents. I'd like to confine my comments to a few very specific issues. First, I would like to remind all of my fellow citizens of the enormous responsibility our council faces in trying to create a housing element that will meet all the criteria established by the state for affordable housing, fair housing access, numbers of housing units needed for future growth, and all the other issues addressed therein. Our council must prepare an update to the element every four years for the next two cycles due to their failure to meet the deadline set by the state for the last housing element. That failure was due in no small part to the resistance of many citizens to increasing density in our city and their ability, thanks to Proposition A, to vote down proposed rezoning of properties needed to allow the city to meet the state's mandates. As a result of the unwillingness of the required two-thirds of citizens to accept either Measures T or U, the city was forced to accept a plan that was, to some extent, decided by the state. The state's response to the city's original HEU submitted earlier this summer specifically states, quote, "The element must be revised to effectively mitigate the right-to-vote requirements," Prop A, "with regard to implementing state housing element law." The current housing element cycle requires that the city submit a finished plan to the state no later than April 15th, excuse me, 2021. Not only are there a plethora of issues relating to location and designation of parcels suitable for building higher-density residential development, but this year the issue is further complicated by the need to address changes in the density bonus regulations passed by the state. While the density bonus rules are intended to encourage construction of affordable housing, they also substantially increase the density of market-rate housing. The new law will increase the maximum bonus from 35% to 50%, unless the city writes an acceptable substitute ordinance before January 1st, 2021. All of this adds up to one thing. Prop A, in its current form, is an obstruction to the city completing a fair and reasonable housing element. The city is in the process of trying to obtain a ruling from the courts regarding whether Prop A can be bypassed, as the state did in the last housing cycle. Meanwhile, the city is already looking ahead to the next four-year cycle in the event that they need to put up more zoning issues on the ballot. I submit that while the citizens should certainly have a say in how the state's rules are implemented, the current need for a two-thirds majority to pass anything makes it virtually impossible for the city, in the face of resistance by many residents to growth of any kind. I would like to ask the city to consider placing a measure on the ballot in the spring, excuse me, to amend Prop A to require a simple majority approval. The citizens have shown in re-electing our current officials that the majority approve of the direction we are moving, and this amendment would allow everyone to still have their voice heard. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Teresa Bochamp. Teresa, can you hear me? Teresa?
Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Go ahead and start when you're ready. You'll have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Teresa Bochamp. I'm a 32-year resident of Encinitas and physician assistant who practiced in North County for over 25 years. I want to congratulate Mayor Blakespear, Deputy Mayor Kelly Henze, and Tony Cranz on your successful elections. The Encinitas Housing Plan will continue to move forward with a spirit of compassion, fiscal, and environmental responsibility with your leadership. I hope that in the future that social media platforms will do a better job to control misinformation and misogynistic attacks. It is never okay for women leaders to fear for their safety because residents don't agree with their policies. I first became aware of the lack of affordable housing for my medical assistants when I began practicing medicine in Encinitas. The majority of them lived in Oceanside. The average wage for a medical assistant in San Diego County ranges from $14 to $20 per hour. Average monthly rent in Encinitas is $2,900, which requires a minimum of a $50 per hour wage. Encinitas medical assistance inability to afford housing in Encinitas results in high attrition rate. When physicians open up closer to their homes, they leave our medical practices. High attrition of medical staff decreases quality of care. The good news is that City of Encinitas has the opportunity to move the affordable housing needle by providing 44 very low-income, deed-restricted units, thanks to Fox Point Farms Community. Based upon the city's 2020 income and affordable housing and cost schedule, these apartment homes will be made available for an individual earning $40,450 annually, approximately $19 per hour job, or a family of four earning $50,750 annually. I support Fox Point Farms' commitment to the site's agricultural history and innovation towards environmental sustainability. I wish to highlight its dedication to open space amenities, including the 5.5-acre organic farm, the bike-share program for all residents, its LEED gold certification, and its proximity to schools, services, and transit. Finally, I wish to emphasize how well Brian Grover, developer of Fox Point Farms, has included community input during its formation. I encourage our city council to look to Fox Point Farms as a model of a doable and appropriate development project that fits the unique needs of Encinitas' hard-working residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Teresa. Our next speaker is Bob Kent. Bob, you can start when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead and start.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bob Kent, Encinitas resident, member of Keys for Homes in Encinitas. We're local residents who advocate for the building of affordable homes in Encinitas for our seniors, family residents, as well as for our essential workers who are in between $15 to $20 an hour in our commuting long distances or finding difficult living situations in order to stay here in the city they serve. You know, this is particularly evident during the COVID pandemic. Our frontline essential workers basically put their health on the line every day to support us, including EMTs, lifeguards, grocery workers, elder care and home healthcare workers, and support staffs for our medical offices, clinics, hospitals, and so many others. We have a housing affordability crisis regionally and also in Encinitas. And it's through this lens we support the adoption of a compliant sixth-cycle housing element that will truly help create a path to actually building more affordable housing in Encinitas. We understand there is no single solution or silver bullet here, so we support the city's efforts to bolster the many tools required to build more affordable housing, including. With respect to ADUs, we encourage the city to develop a plan so that financing can be provided to build ADUs to incentivize and ensure long-term affordability. With respect to the no-net-loss rule, we support the latest revision to the plan indicating the city's commitment to commencing a review of sites that may be suitable for upzoning, if necessary, right after the housing element adoption in the spring. We believe any new site or sites selected should focus on utilizing and/or monetizing city, county, NCTD, or other government-owned land as a path to building a model affordable community that we can be proud of. Let's see. "The city must have financial skin in the game to leverage additional financing required to achieve this objective, especially since we live in a high-land-cost area." This approach would truly move the needle in building more affordable housing. Building more affordable housing. We are not advocating for a specific site tonight, just a process and a commitment to achieve real measurable success. Lastly, we respectfully request that as you thread the needle here, and it is quite difficult, and adopt these policies, you continue to do so by abiding by all fair housing requirements and by encouraging and incentivizing affordable housing opportunities that fit well in our neighborhood across the income spectrum. Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Bob. Hi, next speaker is Susan Turney. Susan, can you hear me? Susan, you need to unmute your microphone.
Yep.
Okay.
That's okay.
I am there. Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Thank you. All right, so with this draft housing element update, the council is continuing to assume 100% affordability on unsubmitted projects. This is despite the fact that those proposed so far are yielding at best 15%. I find it appalling that the council is back to misleading the public into believing that no further upzoning is anticipated and that you are continuing to make impossible claims that will never materialize. An email from HCD to the city earlier this year spoke to the absurdity of assuming 100% when the city requires only 15% of developers, and HCD asked that the numbers be adjusted to better align with reality. This reality is that significant upzoning will be required under the no-net-loss requirement as the remaining projects are proposed at 15%, not 100% affordable. Assuming that any developer of the 15 parcels in the sixth housing element upzone will come forward at 100% affordability flies in the face of reality. These are market-rate, not affordable housing builders. In fact, in August of this year, The Coast News published an article titled "Encinitas Concedes Likely Need for Additional Affordable Housing Sites" based on information it obtained from planning staff. And since Prop A was set aside for the fifth and not sixth cycle and is still in effect, I'd like to know what your plan is to put additional parcels to a vote. The city acknowledged in September of this year, quote, "It is likely that no net loss requirements will mandate that additional sites be designated." Does the city plan to go back to court and ask for further invalidation of Prop A rights-to-vote on high-density zoning and height increases? And just to correct what someone said earlier, does not take a two-thirds vote to pass or deny a housing element update under Prop A just 51% or over 50%. One last thing Barbara Couts had mentioned last week, I think it was, that the city is doing a Nexus study to look at raising the percentage required for the sixth-cycle parcels. And I don't see that mentioned anywhere in this draft ordinance. Would like to know why it's missing. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Laney, I don't see, there was one other speaker, Laney Cassis, but I don't see her present. Laney, are you there? Then, Mayor, that does conclude speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to the staff report now, unless any council members have questions. And if the staff who's presenting this could try to incorporate the question that Ms. Turney asked about the inclusionary ordinance going up to 20%, that had been my understanding too. So if we can address the timing of that or what's happening on the status there, I'd appreciate that.
I'm gonna load the microphone right now.
Thank you. And just before you start, I just also want to confirm what Susan Turney said for Barbara Murray's benefit. I see she's still there on the phone, that Prop A is 50%. It's not a two-thirds requirement. So Prop T and you both failed because they didn't make it above 50%.
We're double-checking right now, just to confirm that it's not a simple majority.
It is a simple majority. It's always been a simple majority. We don't have to check. It's 50% plus one. Question on the, so we just did the Nexus study on the, I know this is off-topic and it's not part of this agenda item, and we'll probably discuss it at some point. But wondering, since we just did the inclusionary zoning ordinance not that long ago and that, that, that the whole calculation matrix of how we look at the Nexus and develop the numbers, I think we own that, or it's our property. And so do we have to hire a consultant to do that all again? Or are we doing those numbers, crunching those numbers in-house? Since, since I believe we own that calculation or that algorithm of how they do it?
So the Nexus study, we are, in the inclusionary ordinance update, we are hoping to bring forward within the next couple of months to planning commission as well as city council and with the recommendation that was previously presented of 20% for all developments of seven or more, and also the in-lu fee option. So the, if you're, are you referencing the calculation that was completed to complete the Nexus and all the research that was done that you're referencing?
Right, Jennifer, we, not that long ago, I mean, it seems like, well, it doesn't seem like that long ago. We went through the whole process of, of, of setting the inclusionary number. And so we, we paid for a study to be done. And so I was just wondering, since we're now just kind of pushing it up with, because there's new facts on the ground, do we, do we have to pay a consultant for a whole new study, or how is that actually done?
I think the study is completed and it did look at density bonus increases as well as up to 35%. And the increase in inclusionary, I want to say, was up to 25% or 30% for the R30 sites. So I do not believe that we need to update that Nexus study. I think we can utilize this to look at further increases above 20% because we did look at that. So we'll bring all of that information to you. The Nexus study is online right now. We do have a webpage for the inclusionary. Nexus study that was prepared. And we can, you know, re-release that and make sure everybody knows where to find that information on our website.
Excellent, thank you.
Within the next couple of months, we'll be moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to emphasize the importance of doing that immediately because I think we had this conversation quite a while ago in a joint meeting with the planning commission. And like you said, the study's been completed. So it's a little bit unclear to me why it's been so long that we've been waiting to push up the inclusionary ordinance to 20% or above. But, but let's really expedite that because we have housing element sites that are coming in all the time. And I think, as we've stated many times, we want to have as much affordability in those projects as possible. So, you know, let's really get that at the front of the priority list here.
Right?
Okay, can I, can I have an acknowledgement from staff that that was heard and understood?
Yes, we will. We will prioritize it and make sure we bring it to the council.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna move forward with the presentation for tonight. So this is Jennifer Gates, the project planner here at the City of Encinitas. So this is the sixth-cycle housing element update for the city council study session. In the room with me right now is Royce Apau, Assistant Director, as well as Lillian Doherty, the Director for Development Services. And online is Barbara Couts, our Special Counsel for Housing, to assist in answering questions tonight. So for those, for city council as well as for those on watching tonight, I wanted to provide a brief background again on what the housing element is and where we've been in this process, and then talk about what are the comments that we have received from HCD and as well as some of the modifications that we have proposed. So that housing element is required. Every eight years, the state requires that each jurisdiction updates its housing element to address future housing needs in accordance with our Government Code Section 66583. The Department of Housing and Community Development is the agency responsible for tracking and determining our compliance with state housing law. On October 8, 2019, HCD certified our city housing element for Cycle 5, which is from 2013 to 2021. The city is currently in the process of updating the housing element for the sixth cycle, which is from 2021 to 2029. And it must be adopted by the city council by April 15, 2021. So one of the questions that we get a lot is what is the regional housing needs allocation and where does it come from? So the RENA, as we call it, for the sixth cycle, was established by HCD and SADAG with input from local jurisdictions. And it determines the methodology for allocation of housing units for the planning period. On November 1, 2019, HCD approved the methodology developed by SADAG for the RENA. And then the final sixth-cycle RENA was approved by SADAG on July 10, 2020. The methodology can be found on SADAG's website and a link was provided in the staff report and on the project webpage. The sixth-cycle methodology developed by SADAG allocated a total of 1,554 units to Encinitas, of which 838 units are allocated to low and very low-income categories. So progress to date. In May 2019, the city began the update process with a request for proposals seeking a qualified consultant to help prepare an update. On September 18, the city council approved this agreement with Kim Lee-Horn Associates, our consultant. City staff and the consultant kicked off with an update on November 18. And that was followed by the city council planning commission study session on December 11, 2019. A second public workshop was held on February 10, 2020. At the second public workshop, staff was focused on ADU production and fair housing and other housing concerns. After completion of the initial public outreach, the city formally submitted the first draft of the sixth-cycle housing element update in June of 2020 to HCD. During HCD's 60-day review, the city received initial verbal comments from HCD, which staff responded to using track changes. And in fact, draft is available on the project website along with the response letter. On August 27, 2020, the city received the formal comments from HCD that is attached to the staff report. Staff also received comment from the public during HCD's review, which is also attached on Appendix A. Staff has updated the draft sixth-cycle housing element in response to comments and has updated the project webpage with the most recent draft that was linked from the staff report tonight. The HCD comment letter provided a number of comments that were organized under four main topics. Attachment two of the staff report is our response to the comments in a matrix format and identifies the comment topic and section and pages in the housing element documents where those responses are reflected. Since many of the comments overlap, staff summarized the responses in the staff report for tonight and for our discussion under the topics of site analysis, affirmatively further fair housing constraints, and public participation. So the first topic under sites analysis. One key element of a housing element is the site's analysis. A jurisdiction must provide a sufficient amount of adequate sites to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation. HCD provided comments on the city's proposed sites and site capacities. The city completed their site analysis in compliance with the realistic capacity of the sites in accordance with Government Code Section 65583.2 and the HCD's Technical Assistance Guide. The city relooked at the site's analysis and has updated the housing element. The update includes an increase in the realistic site capacity. The dwelling unit yield for R30 sites has been much higher than anticipated during the city's 2019 housing element update. To reflect a more realistic development potential, the city assumed an increase in development capacity from 25 DU's to 30 DU's per net acre on the seven sites identified in Table C1 that have not been, that have not submitted an application. The city is also including the Armstrong parcels in the sixth cycle, which were not included in the sixth cycle for HCD. As the potential period for redevelopment is now eight years and the site has already been rezoned for the R30 overlay. The potential dwelling unit for accessory dwelling units is also more than originally projected annually based on our current trends of around 100 building permits being issued a year. And so this also has increased. In addition.
Jennifer, can you talk a little bit, before you leave this slide, talk a little bit about, maybe drill down a little bit about the realistic site capacity as you say here? You know, we did analysis before and, and based on the application of our, of our municipal code, we said that these, each of these sites would have a certain capacity. But now in practice, we find that it potentially has a higher capacity. Could you just kind of talk to, you know, why that's so and, and how you've looked at the remaining sites?
Sure, so many of the sites that have submitted applications, and these are in reference to our low-income sites that we're talking about. They initially were identified for the calculation of the number of units per site at 25 dwelling units per acre. So the applications that we have received on these housing element sites have been more than 25 units per site, or 12, per dwelling unit, per acre. Dwelling units per acre, sorry about that. Many are requesting density bonus. And are, so they're, in addition to meeting the max under the zoning, which is 30 DU's per net acre, they are now going above that when with density bonus, they are looking at sometimes 30 or more DU's per gross acre.
So originally, staff didn't take into consideration the fact that state density bonus existed or that, that with, with, with by right legislation that, that these could be higher than R30?
Barbara can speak better to the last cycle.
Basically, two things. In the last cycle, HCD would not allow the city to include density bonus in determining site capacity, even though virtually all the developers in Encinitas utilized density bonus, nor would they allow the city to utilize 30 units per acre. 25 units an acre was as high as the city, as HCD would allow the city to calculate. In addition, HCD required the city to delete acreage that under the, under the, let's see, let me say that again. HCD would only allow the city to count the net acreage in determining, determining capacity without acknowledging that under density bonus law, developers are entitled to look at gross acreage. So that's why the numbers were so much lower than we're actually experiencing because frankly, the Encinitas developers are very savvy about state density bonus law and use it. and use it pretty aggressively.
Thank you. I just think that's a good and fair explanation, just because I think some folks are now seeing that these sites are developing at a much higher capacity than we had thought originally. And so I just want to make sure we highlight why that's so. And, you know, going into the fifth cycle, we didn't realize that some of these sites actually had a higher capacity.
Yeah, and I think.
I think we have some other questions here. So let me go ahead and call on people here. So Councilmember Hubbard had her hand up. And then I'll go to Tony. You're muted, Councilmember Hubbard.
Okay, there we go. All right. So the reason I put my hand up is before we're so quick to go from 25 units to 30 units on these properties that haven't submitted yet, are we sure we want? Because doesn't that then also bump up their bonus density, too?
No, they're already entitled to assume a density of 30 units an acre.
Okay. It won't have any impact then on what the ultimate building units will be? Because they're going to build them anyway.
If they want to. Yeah. We have a minimum density in the R-30 zone of 25 units per net acre and a maximum density of 30 units already. And the developers, and that's in both the zoning and the general plan, and the developers are entitled to use 30 units an acre if they want to claim density bonus. Basically, by increasing the site capacity, the city increases its buffer somewhat.
Okay.
Which we thought was fair.
Yeah.
Frankly, in the letter from HCD, they were suggesting the city reduce the site capacity. But in HCD's Technical Assistance Memo, that's not required. The city is required to designate sites that are suitable for lower-income housing. And if the sites are zoned at R-30, they're considered to be suitable for lower-income housing, you know, barring some kind of obstacle. Only when the site is approved at a lower, with fewer lower-income units, does the city lose that capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Krantz?
Yes, so 30 dwelling units per acre is a proxy for affordability. And I think that one of the main arguments we see against that particular piece of, you know, that bit of folly, is that it doesn't take into consideration the cost of the dirt that the project's being built on. And therefore, you know, in the end, it's only the deed restricted oftentimes that end up being affordable. And I just wanted to clarify, because Councilmember Moska couched a question that suggested that staff made a decision about how these would be calculated. And it looks like, from this slide, that we followed Government Code, Section 65583.2, and essentially followed the law on the calculation. And I think Barbara did a good job of summarizing some of the reasons why we had to reduce the capacity for the calculations. But I also think that it's important to, you know, recognize that some people are very frustrated by the number of units that are actually being proposed for these sites. So we've got this kind of catch-22 where they think we're trying to hoodwink the community. And the reality is that, as from where I sit, the perspective that I have is that we're trying to upzone the absolute mental number of parcels that we can in order to comply with state law. And so that means that there will be a future date that we have to do some upzoning. I want the public to be absolutely clear. There's no question that no net loss is going to cause us to have to upzone some more sites. And anybody that thinks that we're trying to hide that fact, I would like to disabuse them of that notion. But in reality, you know, this is one of those situations where we put together this plan, and then the plan meets the reality. And, you know, it's like war, where, you know, everything goes out the window. And it's really been tough to talk to people about the effects of some of these projects on their neighborhoods. So I just wanted to be clear that we're doing this according to the law.
Deputy Mayor Henze?
So my question centers around the concept of affordable by design. And this is something that Councilmember Krantz has brought up before, that when you have density bonus invoked, and now we're going to see, you know, just under 50% allowed after January 1, you're having to make smaller units on these sites. And so should some of these units become available at rental rates that are not deed-restricted, but they are within the category, the level of being affordable or very low, then we could take credit for those units? Is that correct? Even though they're not designated affordable units?
That is correct. We do ask that when we issue a building permit, that they fill out what's called an H-form, a housing survey form, and they let us know what their rental rates are going to be for their unit. And in some cases, they, it may not be a deed restriction, but it may be that they're offering this site at this specific rental rate, and it falls within those categories. And we will mark it when we report to HCD in April that they have submitted a survey, and that they have said that they are going to do it with a moderate income or a very low income. And that gets counted against the RENA when we actually issue the building permit.
Right, yeah. So that helps us in a way, because even though this is frustrating to see density bonus invoked time and again, which means it's not part of our expectations that we had when we initially upzoned these sites, that we might actually capture more affordable-by-design units for the community than we had anticipated.
And in other ways, like through our accessory dwelling unit production as well.
Right. And while I'm speaking, I do have another question of clarification, because I know that there's the urgency to update our inclusionary ordinance. But what we're seeing with some of these applications that are coming in is that they're already taking advantage of the 20% by right allowances that they're able to. And so we haven't seen any projects yet come through that aren't superseding the city's inclusionary ordinance. They're all taking advantage of what either state density bonus allows or what the by right designation allows. Is that correct?
In some cases, they are, I think, yeah, I think the way you said it was correct. It was density bonus and/or the by right allowance of 20%. I don't think any are submitting meeting the minimum requirement for inclusionary. I think they're submitting with more affordable than what our inclusionary requirement requires.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moska?
I just want to make sure that certainly I'm not indicating that we're not, that this, that everything that we've done is in pursuit into the government code. And I'm just voicing frustration as other people have. And, you know, and how, you know, if we turn back the clock and we're talking about, you know, a more realistic site capacity, that, you know, perhaps we wouldn't have had to identify 15 sites, as Councilmember Krantz has already alluded to. And perhaps, you know, certain sites would have looked fairly ridiculous to have on our housing element. Just because if layered with other affordable housing laws, you could see 45, 50 DU on some of these sites, which is just not, just not a good, which is not a good kind of capacity on certain sites. Almost all of them, but certainly certain sites stand out.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, too. So I just want to follow up on Deputy Mayor Henze's comment about the percentage of inclusionary that these projects are resulting in. Is it, is that, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what you said accurately. So all of the projects are coming in above 20% affordable? Is that actually the case? Because the question she asked seemed like it was, there were two parts to it. They're either by right at 20% or they are density bonus. And I don't think that that necessarily means that it ends up being above 20% affordable. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. Our inclusionary requirement is 10% for very low and 15% for low. So the proposed ordinance that we moved forward with the inclusionary that was supported by the NEXIS was to increase up to 20%, which, as we're talking right now, the lows that have applied for by rights are already submitting with a 20% low-income affordability component.
But, I mean, how many of them are submitting under the by right? Isn't there only one?
No.
Five out of seven are by right. And then, I'm trying to think, five point is? Fifteen. And Fenway are different. But not the 20% by right, but I want to say that they were above the minimum requirement under inclusionary. So five point is very low, and I can't remember what the exact percentage was, but it's more than 10%.
Well, that's good to know, because that means that the fact that we haven't acted on increasing our inclusionary percentage hasn't had a very much impact. Does that sound accurate?
I think that sounds accurate. If the city council planning commission wanted to go beyond 20%, it would depend on what would be supported by that NEXIS study. And that's the discussion still to be had.
Okay. Yeah, I still, my belief is still that our minimum should be at the highest percentage of affordability possible. Because all of this discussion is about the percentage, or the amount of affordable housing that we're building in the city. And we are always hearing from our community that we need more affordable housing, and we don't want to do unnecessary upzoning. And so all of those things, to me, go to say that the baseline should be the highest inclusionary percentage possible. And we should move that forward. If it can be 25%, whatever that is, we should move that forward in the process to try to get there. But I am happy to hear that we haven't been disadvantaging ourselves because most of these projects are coming in above 20% anyway. And then my last comment is, just to reinforce that realistic site capacity, despite what HCD is saying back to us in the letter, you know, I want to make sure that, and Barbara seemed to indicate this, which is great, that we're following the guidelines that have been put out by HCD, and that we are pushing back to the extent we can to have our sites realistically reflect the capacity that will be built there. Because for all the reasons that my colleagues stated and you all stated, we want to make sure that we aren't doing unnecessary upzoning and that our buffer is bigger. And so making sure, you know, we're already in litigation with the state. So to me, this seems like one of those things that we should clearly be fighting for, to say this, especially with a 50% density bonus that has just been mandated by the state, that we push back on this issue of realistic site capacity so that we can have it be as close as possible, given all the guidelines we're working within.
Okay.
So, okay, good. So I guess we're on Slide 6, so we can proceed along in your presentation.
No problem. So the last comment on this site, or this slide itself, is that in addition to updating the information on the site analysis during the time period in which HCD was providing comments, the projection period began for the sixth cycle. And so the projection period began on June 30, 2020. And the city can obtain RENA credit for projects that are still under construction on June 30. Those issued building permits after June 30 and are approved projects by planning commission. And so these also have been updated. So this is the table that reflects that information that I just provided to you. And what you can see on the top is the RENA that's actually been allocated for each of the income level. And then the unit entitled or under construction that started in June 30. So we pulled all the current building permits and found information on them. And remember our discussion when we issued a building permit, we also identify, using our H survey, how many are meeting specific income level. So that is reflected here, as well as we apply our ADU construction. A lot of these units are ADUs, and so we have H forms for many of them. And we also apply our projection for ADUs that meet these different income levels that you'll see. So for example, ADU production, we may, 25% of our ADUs have been typically very low or low income. So that was applied to the existing building permits that were issued for ADUs. If we didn't have that E-form currently, we're in the process of making sure that we have obtained all E-form for all projects right now. The additional site capacity analysis. So moderate income and mixed-use areas have not changed. And then our existing residential loan properties, moderate income and a moderate income site have not changed. As discussed previously, we have increased the very low, low income for our R-30 sites. We also increased our projected ADU construction, which is reflected here. And so that's increased our total capacity, as well as our total buffer. And so when you take 838 and subtract 44 and subtract 1835, you'll end up with 1,041. And so that is our buffer over the RENA. So again, this is over 100% of the city's 838-unit RENA obligations. We did want to talk about no net loss. We know there's lots of questions about it. We've received a lot of comments as well. So the city is required to track development by income level pursuant to the government code. If an approval of a development results in a reduction below the number of units needed by the income category, the city is required to identify, and if necessary, rezone additional sites within 180 days. And that is to accommodate the shortfall and to ensure no net loss in the capacity. Given the no net loss provision, the city included a surplus of units or a buffer, which we have identified on that previous slide. In addition, the city recognizes its obligation through the continuation of Program 1E, which is to ensure that adequate sites remain available throughout the planning period. Any site rezoned will satisfy the adequate site requirements of the government code and will be consistent with our city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing, which is reflected in updates to this program in response to HCD comment. And I did have an example of no net loss for you. So this is an example of no net loss, which applies to the units for lower and moderate-income households. The finding shall include a quantification of the remaining unmet need for the jurisdiction share of a regional housing need at each income level and the remaining capacity of sites identified in the housing element to accommodate that need by income level. When you look at this slide here, what it's showing an example of is a ten-housing element site A that may have been identified with 100 low-income units. And somebody comes forward with a proposed project on that site, and their project is going to have 20 low-income units and 80 above-moderate income units. And this is what's going to be presented to planning commission and let the planning commission approve that. At that time, the finding needs to be made that there's still a site available to meet our required RENA. So the first item that we were just talking about, the remaining unmet need for the jurisdiction share of the RENA. And so here you see a reduction. So that's the RENA minus the proposed units. So we had 838 RENA, and then they're proposing 20. We have 818 units still left for that category. So in addition, you need to do a site capacity reduction. And so when we looked at our housing element site capacity, we had said there were 100 units. Now we're proposing 20. So the site capacity has been reduced by 80 units of low, very low income. So the total capacity over the RENA, or the buffer reduction, is the buffer minus that site capacity. So our buffer is now reduced from originally of 1,041 to 961 units. And as projects are approved by planning commission, then we will be continuing to deduct from the. the buffer. So when we meet at a time when it goes to zero or to no more buffer left is the time in which we need to move forward that's required to rezone a site within 180 days. Barbara, did I explain that very well? You need to.
No, that's great.
I think the deputy mayor wants to ask a question right here.
Yeah. So I have a question about this because I think what we find through the process of approving projects is that we never know at the council level how much those units will be sold for, rented for. And so if we're not giving the survey to determine the affordability until the building issue, building permit is issued, then there's this great deal of time between the approval at the discretionary level and then the issuing of the permits. So it seems like we could get ourselves into a situation with some of these projects that are at the higher density levels where they actually are affordable, but we don't find that out until a year later or six months later.
So for the housing element site, they will be required to have a percentage affordable. And so that will be identified at the beginning of their project that they'll move forward with the planning commission for example. The site, let's say an ADU here or there gets a building permit, will continue to track those and deduct from our RINA. And so we need to basically have two lists going, what's our RINA reduction by other types of projects. But no net loss, we're really speaking to our low income or lower income household units as well as our moderate income household units and making sure that we have enough sites identified to meet our RINA requirement.
I mean, yeah, I would just add, add to that, that you have to make the findings at the time the project is approved. So all you know then is the, basically the inclusionary units or, or the number of affordable units, you know, that are, that the person, that the developer has promised to provide. If it turns out that some of the units are actually rented or sold, some of the market rate units, maybe at a moderate income level, if the city can continue to track that and at a later time show that those, say, moderate income, units that are at market rate, but market rate is moderate income, the city could deduct, could additionally deduct those and show that it's meeting its moderate income needs, say, through these naturally affordable units. So you could add, you, I mean, you're correct that it, that at the approval stage, you wouldn't know that. But it's possible the city, if the city finds out later that the rents are in fact affordable, it could do an additional deduction. Does that make sense?
It does, but with no net loss, if we already determined that and then we have to, we only have six months to locate the next site, then you might be finding it out.
Too late.
Yeah.
You do have a pretty substantial buffer. I was looking at the technical guide and they only suggest a 20 or 30% buffer. And I think, I think the reason you're using up your buffer is basically this developers are finding the sites very developable.
Okay. Deputy Mayor or Councilmember Hubbard?
Okay. I don't actually really need to talk. I didn't feel that Councilwoman Henze's question was adequately answered, which is why I was gonna ask about it one more time. But Barbara jumped in and clarified. So.
Well, my follow up on the question actually was, so the, I think what, one of what the points of her question was that when the application is submitted, that, that, that's the point where there's decision making that's happening right at the planning commission and then it's appealed at the council level. And that that would be where the, that's when we, when we have an idea of what the project is. So would the developer at that stage be saying these number of units are predicted to be moderate? I mean, we know the inclusionary part because that part they have to say because that's deed restricted. But the non-inclusionary part are the ones where they could end up floating around a bit depending on what the market looks like, right?
Yeah. And I see those as, I see that as a real possibility as some of those becoming more low income qualifying units.
But is, so, I mean, are we set up to follow that? Is the staff looking at what actually happens to those units when they get built? Or what is it that we're doing? Or what kind of information does the developer have to provide to us as the project moves forward?
It'll continue to be that housing survey. So like you commented, the ones that we know are going to be deed restricted is what we know at the approval level of the project. And if they know at that time that they're going to have moderate, then they'll, or certain, you know, a spectrum, let's say of income level, then they could submit that at that time if they know, other than what's required. But we will continue as they go through the process and when they submit for a building permit, we will have them submit another age form and provide us with the rental rate at that time. Because as you know, when the project actually gets developed, our rental rates will need to be identified because they change every year what those actual numbers are going to be. And we are confirming that they are going to meet those requirements at those levels that they have identified.
Okay. So, so we are set up to be following this and getting, getting the credit in moderate if it actually happens to be rented at moderate. You, you feel that we're, we've set up the processes to, to get that information?
Yes. And no matter how many units, one, two, however many units they're proposing, we will require that age form to be submitted before they get their building permit with their rental, what their rental limits are going to be for each unit.
Okay. And that, but I mean, the building permit, things can, like you said, things can change between building permit and rental. So, or is our experience that there, that's always just dead on accurate? I mean, it seems like that's not the case, right?
So with the submittal to HCD in April of every year, it's the building permit issuance and the information that we have at that time that's provided to HCD that gets deducted from our RINA. And so if it's not deed restricted, we do not follow up with them every year. Only those that are deed restricted do we follow up.
I'm sorry to be harping on this, but so what that means, I get that we have to report to HCD every year. But what that means is that if we report one way and then it actually ends up being rented for moderate, we're, we're not circling back to get credit in the next cycle. I mean, so basically our buffer's been depleted, but then we're never saying, okay, we can actually add some more back into this.
So are you, so you're saying after we actually do, they're actually being rented to look back and see what the actual rental rates are for all these, for all units?
Well, yeah. I mean, or if it's an apartment complex and then they all go on the market that, I mean, I don't know if you're going to follow up with each individual unit, but the, but the, yeah, the bulk of them, that there would be that, that way to assess what is happening in our city.
Barbara, so my question is, my understanding with the RINA reduction, is it's for new units put on the market and that a conversion of that unit to a moderate or a low income in the future? Can we count those later on down the road?
Well, my understanding is what the mayor was asking for was at the time of occupancy. You can definitely look, you could definitely look at them at the time of occupancy.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not talking about, you're correct that, you know, five years later, if a city, if a unit becomes a moderate income unit, it can't be counted. But at the time of, if, you know, checking at the time of occupancy would be worth.
We can build that in for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can make that adjustment, but I just wanted to follow up with Barbara in terms of, say, we, at the time of occupancy, we receive that age form and the age form says that they're going to rent at market. And then five years down the road, we receive evidence that they, the rent is at a either low level or a very low income level. Can we retroactively count those, those units?
I, I, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think five years down the road, it would be likely to, well, no. Maybe, maybe the bottom will drop out of the rental market. But no, it's, the reporting is all done usually a building permit and secondarily at occupancy.
And we can, we can do that. We can defer this submittal of the age form until we sign off on final.
On occupancy, you could do that. I mean, you can go back and correct your, and correct your annual reports. So let's say you reported some, when the building permit was issued, it wasn't clear. Maybe the developer didn't know what the rents were. You reported them as mostly above mark, above market. Let's say at occupancy, then there, occupancy, then there, it's clear that some of the units are moderate. I believe you could go back and correct that. I should probably, before talking too much, look at the rules for the annual report. But they, but my understanding is that you can report those, those units at occupancy if they ended up actually being affordable.
That makes sense. I mean, that's logical.
That's logical. That's the most, that's when you would really know. At building permit, I suspect most developers don't want to commit.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Crams?
Yeah, I would like to propose that we look at this less from a RINA compliance perspective and more from a accountability with the community. If it turns out five years later that some of the projects that have been developed under these affordable housing overlays are indeed netting more affordable than HCD gave us credit for, I would like to be able to say that. And furthermore, I would like to be able to go to my assembly person or senator and say, your housing laws need to be changed to accommodate these facts on the ground. And the only way we're going to be able to provide those facts is if we come up with a strategy for surveying all of these apartment units, you know, what the, what the, what the market rates are as the years go by. And so making it a part of the annual report to HCD, whether they allow us to retroactively count them towards our low and very low income RINA obligation is less important to me than making sure that we account for what we actually created as part of this fairly impactful housing element update.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo along the same lines of what Tony was saying was that we're now being responsible for the preservation of affordable units that are naturally occurring affordable units. And so when these buildings start to develop, it's really important for us, I think, to be experts in those buildings and the rents that they're charging because it's our responsibility also to make sure that gentrification isn't the result of this huge effort that we've all gone through. And so I think it's valuable for the city just to know where are the affordable units? When do they become naturally occurring affordable? And how can we put resources into preserving them as affordable in the decades that come?
Okay.
Okay. Great. Before we move on, we did have somebody who's been waiting for a while to make her public comment. She had logged on late. So I wanted to call on Laney if she wants to make her comments.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi there. Okay. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Laney Cassis. I am a young professional who's starting my career in biotech management here. Despite having an MBA, having served our nation through the Peace Corps, I'm pretty nervous about being able to afford to settle down here. I'm also a member of the grassroots nonprofit organization, Encinitas for Equality. On the topic of housing, our mission is to make Encinitas a place where neighbors and neighborhoods are affirmatively anti-racist and a city that intentionally increases access to housing opportunities for low income individuals and families and for Black and Indigenous persons and people of color. We're contributing to the housing, we're aiding the housing crisis, most recently by hosting a Thanksgiving meal drive to support the Oceanside Homeless Resource Center. We've been supplying 50 meals every week to the, that resource center for several months now. Regarding the housing element, I encourage you to continue funding homelessness prevention through rent payments, utility payments, and other financial assistance for residents of Encinitas, ensuring that residents can remain in their homes during these difficult times. We know it is disruptive and costly to find housing for a person or family experiencing homelessness as opposed to providing financial support in keeping these residents housed. To this effect, please extend the residential eviction moratorium as necessary, which is another form of homelessness prevention. We wish to highlight the city's climate action plan, which calls on the city's housing element to implement and enforce existing specific plans to reduce vehicle miles traveled and encourage dense infill development. However, the housing element only makes mention of these plans as they relate to parking standards and ground floor commercial. So we recommend that the city act on this strategy in the climate action plan to facilitate dense infill housing near transit. As in the September 2016 report, Location Matters: Affordable Housing and VMT Reduction in San Diego County, it was found that lower income households are more likely to live in transit-rich areas, own fewer cars, and are likely to live in larger buildings and smaller units, all factors that make affordable housing near transit a key greenhouse gas reduction strategy. Overall, Encinitas for Equality looks forward to working with our elected officials and city government employees to further increase opportunities and access to housing opportunities to both a wide variety of income levels and a wide variety of phases and stages of life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we'll go back to you, Jennifer, in the Lilac Room.
And moving on to our next topic on affirmatively further fair housing. So HCD commented in a number of places regarding the city's analysis as well as the proposed activities to affirmatively further fair housing. This is a new requirement for this cycle. The city completed a comprehensive analysis related to, we call it AFFH, in section 6.4 of Appendix B in accordance with state law. This section incorporates the fiscal year 2020.5 San Diego Regional Analysis Impediment to Fair Housing Choice, which was adopted by City Council in June 2020. The AI identifies impediments that may prevent equal housing access and develops solutions to mitigate or remove such impediments. Section 6.4 of Appendix B also includes additional analysis related to access to opportunity based on the map developed by the Tax Credit Allocation Commission. Discrimination in housing, the potential for displacement, segregation, and concentration, location of existing and proposed affordable units as it relates to race and ethnicity, and other topics that were identified in the government code, 65583, Section B10. To address the comments raised, that has updated Program 2 or created and created a new section, 1.3.4, which summarizes all of the programs and activities that take meaningful action to identify and address discrimination, segregation, and access to opportunity, and fostering compliance for civil rights and fair housing laws, as identified in the government code, Section 8899.50. The next topic is constraints. The HCD had asked of the city modified Program 3C, which relates to the constraints to adopting a housing element posed by Proposition A. In the fifth cycle, two votes had failed to approve a housing element. Program 3C has been modified to reflect the city's current declaratory relief actions against HCD and also indicate that the city will attempt to create more affordable housing. Now, after housing element adoption, we'll work with the community to identify sites that might be rezoned, R30, should that be required. Participation is an important part of the housing element update process. As discussed on an earlier slide, the city has held two public workshops that were in person. that were in person and a city council planning commission study session. To provide additional comment opportunities and for public participation on the housing element, city staff circulated an affordable and fair housing questionnaire in May through June to collect additional information from the community. The community outreach activities with summaries of the discussion are available in English and Spanish, and links to the presentations are available on our project webpage. The results of the surveys that have been conducted are included in Appendix A and located on the project webpage. And this includes surveys that were conducted as part of our regional analysis for fair housing impediment, or otherwise known as AI. The city is continuing its diligent public participation effort to include all economic segments and the community. Another questionnaire is going to be released in November in English and Spanish to gather more information from the community on affordable housing and fair housing issues. In addition, the city is continuing to accept public comments. So during the first public comment review period from June through August 2020 with HCD's review, the city received 11 individual comments and six organizations or interest groups, including Encinitas for Equality, Keys for Homes, San Diego Alliance for Drug Free Youth, San Diego Housing Federation, Faith in Action, and Encinitas Residential Responsible Development. All comments are available in Appendix A. Some of the comments and the questions that were included were clarification on how the site capacity was calculated and if any new sites were being identified during this update to be rezoned, to increase our outreach and education through a diverse population, especially the underserved populations of Encinitas, and increased analysis of racial equity, the need for objective design standards, additional information regarding environmental analysis and traffic studies, the need for an increase in ADU production, and to add clarification on the no-net loss provision. So the next step is to re-submit the draft six-cycle housing element to HCD with a goal of before December 4th, with any further modifications proposed by City Council. HCD will then have 60 days to review the second draft. During this period, the public can continue to provide their comments to HCD and/or the city. Staff and the consultant will complete the responses to HCD comments and bring forward to a draft housing element for review by the planning commission and city council in February, March 2021. So this concludes the staff presentation. The staff recommendation was to discuss the six-cycle housing element update in response to HCD's comments and provide direction to staff. And that concludes my presentation. And as noted, Barbara Foust is still on the line as well to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mosca has his hand up.
Just to kind of answer one other question that was raised by the member of the public, and I've heard it a couple of times. And this kind of connects to, in some ways, the no-net loss policy. And this question's for Barbara or for Jennifer, you know. So, so when we look at, you have that one track of, 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 you know, kind of how many units we're trying to, how many, how many units each site will, will hold and how many sites we have to upzone for, you know, however many units we are, is our obligation for Rena. But then there's the other kind of newer track of, of this kind of no-net loss of, you know, tracking how many units are actually being created that are, are low-income. Why do we start with, is it, is it, is it proper? And why do we start with this kind of notion that each, each site is going to produce 100%? If we know from the get-go that the only thing that is moving a developer toward some level of affordable housing is our inclusionary zoning ordinance or them participating in some kind of benefit from the state in, in terms of state density bonus or buy right. And even at that, it's only 20%. So why in the beginning, what's the, it is, is it, is it proper? And what's the justification for looking at it as 100%, you know, in that, in that beginning?
Well, it's, it's mostly that the state law says you have to identify sites that are suitable for affordable housing. It's, it's very difficult because there's not nearly enough money in the state for every city to build all the affordable, I mean, to build for, to, not for cities to build, but there's not nearly enough money in the state to build the affordable housing that cities have been assigned. I should probably back up and say, the law used to be that you had to designate sites that were suitable for affordable housing. But so long as you built that number of units on the site, that was considered fine, and there was no no-net loss. Then the state changed it to require that not only did they meet the, did the, did the sites meet, you know, be suitable for affordable housing, but if the sites weren't actually developed with affordable housing, then cities had to make up the difference. And there was, there were discussions at the time that cities, you know, if all the sites designated for that were suitable for affordable housing were built, there wasn't nearly enough money to actually build those units, and nobody disagreed with that. So I guess the short answer to the question, councilmember, is that state law requires the city to develop, to identify sites that are suitable for a lower-income housing, and the city has done, has done so. That's what the statute requires, and that's what the technical, that's what the HCD's technical guide requires. And if the city were to assume, say, that only 20% of the units, you know, only 20% of the units built would in fact be affordable, then the city would need to zone four times as many, or what's my math?
Many more, many more.
A lot more, a lot more sites, you know, to be suitable for lower-income housing. But that's also why it's so important to try to get an actual affordable housing project in the city. You know, and that's why the, the accessory dwelling units and counting their affordability is so important. Because the city doesn't want to run out of sites. The city would like to meet its Rena, but I am, and you have a very large buffer, over 100%, but I am curious over, you know, over the next eight years, how this is going to work as more and more sites are developed in communities that barely have managed to meet their Rena and then, you know, drop below their requirement with every approval. Not so much in the Sandy, in the Sandag area, but in the Skag Air Region and in the Bay Area, the numbers have gone up two and a half or three times what they were in the last cycle, and the cities are having. Most of the cities feel it's going to be extremely difficult even to zone enough sites, so I, I think it's a, I think the state has set it up in a way where cities really cannot, are not going to be able to accomplish all this.
Right. So, so the suitability analysis is where we come, come up with a 100%. Is the site actually suitable, you know, if in fact, you know, you had some benevolent kind of developer that wanted to come and put 100%, is it suitable for 100%? But then, you know, there is nothing that forces a developer to do more than, you know, more than, you know, besides their inclusionary zoning, there's nothing that, that forces that developer to do more. But then we have this introduction of this, you know, second track by right, which then says, you know, that, 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 that 100% or that suitability means something. It actually is going to come back to you. If, if you don't actually, if, if you don't find that, you know, if there's not 100% affordable, so then, you know, even though we're not upzoning forever in the beginning with this, with this kind of, with this no-net loss, we could find ourselves in a series of continuous upzoning if in fact we continue to have all these sites developing.
Yeah. I mean, I think most cities assume that all the sites won't develop, that they designate, won't develop, you know, for various reasons. I mean, they, they may do their very best job designating sites that are realistic, but development doesn't happen for, for a lot of reasons. Encinitas is actually somewhat unusual that you have a lot of development in all the designated sites.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Crams.
Yes, well, and the reason we have the development is because we're one of the first jurisdictions to have to comply with new state laws, which were intended specifically to increase the amount of housing production. The old method that we applied under Measure T, which was upzone a bunch of strip mall and commercial parcels for mixed use and, and sit back and expect none of those property owners to develop was, would have saved us a heck of a lot of trouble. We would have been done with this a long time ago, but instead that got voted down and, and, you know, we ended up having to comply with new state laws. So, you know, and, and as to the question about the number that we use and we calculate for these sites, it reminds me of the old saying about you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. If we were to say, okay, well, let's just assume right out of the gate that we're only going to get 20%, and we upzone a whole bunch more parcels because of that, where would we be under SB 330 once we, you know, maybe we got 30% on a site or it turns out that the market, after you build a half a dozen apartment complexes with 200-plus units in it, the market actually reacts to that by having lower rent. Can you imagine that? And it would turn out we would have actually a significant percentage more. I know everybody's skeptical about that, and we want to look at this in a very pessimistic way and cynical way. But the reality is, I want to upzone as few parcels as possible, and then I want to see what comes in. Now, I think the new laws are also looking askance at those parcels that we put on our housing element that don't see any projects submitted. So we're also going to have some housing accountability issues related to parcels that aren't developed. Is that correct, Barbara?
Not really. I suppose if there was some evidence between, you know, your adoption of the housing element in March and the, you know, and the new, and the new housing element that showed that those sites weren't suitable, maybe a landslide on one, you know, something like that, then there would be, then there could be an issue, but the sites remain as suitable and, and the truth is that for the majority of sites, the owners have been in to talk to the city staff about developing on the sites.
That the legislature was tired of housing elements that didn't produce any housing, and that if a parcel was upzoned or had that zoning designation, but it wasn't being built on, that, that jurisdiction would then have an obligation to find another parcel, and you're saying that's not true under the.
No, no, no. What a jurisdiction has to do is, if they want to keep using those parcels, obviously, they have to keep demonstrating that the parcels are suitable. That, that's one thing. But they also have to zone them for by right, which might make them more developable.
Okay, thanks. There was a speaker who, tonight, who talked about the idea of submitting Prop A to the voters for some amendments, and as some of you may recall, back when HCD initially proposed 3C, we were, we had some deliberation about whether that would be by requesting a judge to provide us with declaratory relief from the obligations of Prop A as it relates to housing elements or to go to the voters. And I advocated for going to the voters, and I lost that argument four to one. And I'm interested in seeing whether my colleagues would be willing to consider the idea of, of running a parallel track where we were prepared to put a question on the ballot in 2022 that would modify Prop A to allow for the housing element to be approved without a voter initiative, putting it before the voters. Solana Beach has that language in their right to vote on the upzoning measure, and I, I think that given the difficult decision that a judge will have to have as to whether the voters, the voters' rights under the initiative process to, to enact their own laws, and a judge would be, I think, reticent to, to make a declaratory decision that eliminated that right in any case. So maybe what we should be doing is running a parallel track that allowed us to ask that question to the voters.
Okay, thank you. I have some comments too that I wanted to make. So one of them is a question about defining by right. So when we're using that term, there's a project that's by right. Barbara, can you just tell us what that means?
So, so by right means that if it's a project that has 20% affordable housing and is not requesting a subdivision, it's exempt from all discretionary city review. It's except for design review, and it's also exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So the city really can only apply various objective standards in its design review ordinance or zoning standards and so forth to the project.
And is the coastal zone relevant to that at all?
Yes, the coastal zone is. I should have mentioned that. If it's in the coastal zone, it would still need a coastal development permit, and also it must conform with the, with the Coastal Act. I was just advising a, a city that had a project in the coastal zone with a density bonus. And the Coastal Commission basically wrote a letter, it wasn't a by right project, but I think the same would apply. Coastal Commission both basically wrote a letter objecting to the density bonus, saying they felt that the additional height in, in the case of that project violated the Coastal Act. So in some cases, kind of depending, depending on exactly where the project is in the coastal zone, the Coastal Commission may be able to weigh in, and in any case, it has to, the project has to comply with the city's local coastal plan.
Okay. Okay, thank you. One point I would also like to make that I think is really important for context is that we have this huge buffer of 1,000, 100%, and it's 1,000 more units that we had to zone for in the fifth cycle than we have to zone for in the sixth cycle. And I, I think it's really important to put that into context because, because we just finished the fifth cycle in 2019 that had 2,500 total units. And this cycle of the sixth cycle only has 1,500 total units. You know, we had zoned for that larger number, and then we needed a buffer on top of it. So, you know, that's why we have this big buffer. And I think as we're moving forward with our negotiation with HCD, it just, it seems to me like it just, the, the argument completely collapses that we need to have an even bigger buffer. Especially when you, Barbara, have said that their guidance says 20 or 25% is the amount of buffer, and we have 100% buffer. So, you know, I hope that we're making that argument really clearly so that it's clear to the community and to HCD what, what, you know, this, just the reality of this, of this buffer that's quite large, and we shouldn't need to upzone in a cycle that's 1,000 units less. So going from 2,500 units to 1,500 units, it just doesn't make any sense to have to upzone any additional properties. And I, I really I'm hopeful that we will stand firm on that in our negotiation with HCD. And so the two things that I'm taking away from this meeting that I think are really important, the first one is that the data collection related to affordability is critical. And so, you know, several of my colleagues talked about this, but because, and because of the, the reality of wanting to know what is in our city, also wanting to preserve housing that's naturally affordable, and wanting to get all the credit that we deserve. So if the way that developers fill out the form is that they say this percentage is affordable because of the inclusionary ordinance or the by right requirements, and then the rest of it is what we're just calling market, and we don't get any credit for market because it's not, it's not specified as moderate or above moderate or lower income or very low income. You know, that we're missing out on the opportunities to get that credit. You know, that we're missing out on the opportunities to get that credit for moderate. And so making sure that we're following up, like Barbara said, not just at the building permit, but then also at the, I'm not exactly sure when it is, but it's at the at the time they're moving in or or it's at some point when it's actually built. Because at the building permit stage, they're just not at all clear about what these things will be on the market for. I mean, I think in many ways, this is a similar conversation we've had about accessory dwelling units, where, you know, we we did go through a lot of effort to make sure the form was collecting the information that we needed to say, hey, these are being built and rented for people who are lower income because there are the family members and various circumstances that result in in lower income rentals. And we need to get credit for that. And so, you know, the reemphasis for our staff on data data collection around that, I think, is really important. And so that's something that I think has emerged as a as a takeaway from this meeting. And then the other thing, which was just mentioned briefly, but is that we need an affordable housing project. So we need to find something that actually is 100% or as close as possible to being affordable so that we can markedly improve those numbers and so that we can be providing that in our community. So, you know, we need to be, we've talked about this a lot, and there are all sorts of things that float around as possibilities. And we need to create a critical path for that. So I I do see that as one of the priorities for for me for the next two years that I'm in this seat until the next election. And, you know, we've just finished one election. And I think that this is the the time for us to be really talking about that. And I know, you know, with our new city manager and who's on the team is clear, we need to be moving forward with that. So I just want to put that out there as something that I think is really important for us to be talking about, to be planning for, and to be looking ahead. Because we know that our our buffers will be running down, our affordability, our numbers of affordable units will not be adequate, and that we should be trying to meet this goal. And it should be, you know, something that the council and the city staff are working toward. So let's see, I see Councilmember Crowns' hand has gone back up. Go ahead, Councilmember Crowns.
Along those lines, I would like to suggest that one of the things that we should do is work with NCTD to explore the possibility of of a affordable housing development in the rail corridor as a creation of a mobility hub in our downtown. I think that some of you may recall the presentation we got from Brett Farrow, who, as a professor at an architectural school, used that area as an exercise in trying to develop higher-density housing that would be affordable. And I think they did a great job at that. NCTD and the City of Oceanside recently partnered with an RFP for a project that's on the Transit Center in Oceanside. And out of that project, there will be a project, a affordable component that will be built on the NCT site on Mission, and it will be built by Chelsea Homes, and it will be 100% affordable at that site. The project over at the Transit Center itself will be market rate, and some of those units will be higher end. But it might be something that we could, you know, a model that we could take a look at here in Encinitas. And so we do have a a letter from NCT expressing an interest in working with us. And I would, you know, like to provide direction to staff and the city manager to further that conversation with with NCTD and and try and put some, you know, some some more details in what what could be possible there. And it would involve not just the the rail corridor and the parking lots that NCTD owns in downtown, but also would look at the city's property at City Hall as a possible part of any development that that might take place. So I'm not sure if we can get to 100% affordable on with a project like that, but I think that it would be worth exploring. So I'm not sure what we'd need to do in order to make that happen. But if bringing it back with an action item on an agenda is necessary, then maybe we can, we can all agree that it's worth exploring in that way at least. On the the other, the other thing I would mention is that, you know, the the specific plan I see is going to be on our agenda for, there's a an item on on Wednesday's meeting for a specific planning process, a grant we received, and and the potential to hire a consultant to look at the El Comunitarielle corridor specific planning idea. And I think that's very timely. As we all know, that's one of our transit corridors with bus routes 309 and 304 intersect there at at El Comunitarielle. So I'm looking forward to that and the possibilities that might exist in in a conversation about that area for future affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Henze.
Thank you. So I agree with what Tony and Catherine said about the need for the city to have some skin in the game somehow by, you know, taking ownership of a of a more affordable project than we see when it's just left to the private market. And I support both of the ideas that Councilmember Crowns brought forward, especially because that's what we're hearing now from the community is that transit-oriented development that's smaller is fits with a lot of the lifestyles of seniors and young professionals and a lot of the people who are missing in our in our city. So I support those ideas. And I would just add that when I was looking through the public comments, there are certain groups that are overrepresented in those who fill out our surveys, attend our meetings, and pay really close attention to housing topics. And they tend to be homeowners and from my just quick evaluation, older folks. And I really hope that, you know, we're trying to squeeze in one last survey here that we really go for finding people in our community who are actually low-income residents to complete the survey and to become experts in what their challenges are and how to reach them. And I think that looking at the difference between the first draft of the housing, the sixth cycle housing element, and looking at this one, considerable work has been done, and I commend staff for that because there's new organizations that we've reached out to, and we even heard their voices here tonight on the call, which I think were really important voices that we need to have equally represented as renters, as young people, as the future of our city. And so however that's possible, just some ideas that have come to my mind is that I know the Holiday Baskets program is going to come to North County again, and that was a great way for us to reach people when we were doing our census count, the hard-to-reach populations for census. And I think the difference is people that are overrepresented tend to have more time on their hands and more resources. And so the people who we're trying to reach have, you know, they're more tight on time, and their time is a valuable resource. So, you know, if we're giving somebody a $20 gift card to a grocery store in town to take the time to fill out that survey, I think that's worth our our efforts. I also think that it's really important to work with our school districts, specifically the schools with Encinitas Union that are the dual immersion program schools. Because for them to be able to have the dual instruction, the English and Spanish, they have to have a surrounding population that is fluent in Spanish, and that's their household language. And so it's in the best interest of that whole school community to be able to keep as many Spanish speakers in our community as possible. And so if we're really engaging those specific schools with our with our incentives for ADUs, I think that's a great market of folks to reach in our city. And I think that was all that I had to say.
Okay. Well, thank you. Councilmember Hubbard.
Okay, I got so wrapped in what Kelly was saying, I forgot what I was going to say. Other than I wanted to support Tony, I agree 100% in working with NCTD. It was something that I had spent many hours with Brett Farrow on before I was elected. We we talked a lot about it. And this idea of affordable by design versus everything having to be slipped into a slot that the government said it has to be low, low, and has to be low. The idea of something being affordable by design, what a concept, that you don't have to force it. If you have enough units and you do it in the right way, it will naturally be affordable. Now, realistically, Encinitas on the beach, we're a very desirable neighborhood. It may never get to that. But wow, can you imagine if if we had so many units and maybe it was $100 a month that the city had to contribute to make them affordable? You know, might be that that magic piece. So, you know, I think there are ways we can do it. So anyway, I do want to support the idea that we really seriously look at using maybe the parking lots right at D Street and forgotten the name of the street. Deen Vulcan. Got it. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Councilmember Mosca.
I did want to say that I'm happy with what's with what staff has put in front of us today. And and I think that we're in a good place in terms of responding to HCD. And everything the mayor said about the buffer and standing our ground in terms in terms of the inventory, I would just echo. And, you know, and just, I I think that this is a good response, and I'm hoping for a very good response from HCD. You know, a a New Year's gift from HCD when we come back, and so that we can kind of get this, get this done. I am extremely excited by the fact that we don't have to upzone, and we don't have to get into the whole conversation of, you know, just an additional additional units for for the inventory. So that really, I think, that makes us a lot better. I do think that as we kind of move forward and we look at the circulation element, we really do need to look at, because we didn't really identify a lot of these sites in high-traffic corridor areas and near transit centers, which we should be doing in the future, you know, there's going to be impacts. And so we really need to start to identify those impacts and and to meet those impacts in the best way that we can as a city. And I think that we we start with that circulation plan, circulation element that we'll be discussing soon. I also want to give give voice to and support the whole idea of, you know, as lack of a better word, putting skin in the game. You know, now that we have our housing element done for the fifth cycle and looking to wrap it up for the sixth cycle, you know, we need to move beyond just kind of what the private sector is going to deliver, and but but also what we can do. And so I think that it's a it's a fair, it's a fair expectation that over the the course of this sixth cycle, that we should be talking about how can we put together a project that is 100% or nearly 100% affordable housing? I think focusing on one big project that we can, you know, really get done over the next cycle, I think, would be a good thing, where we can really, you know, pinpoint where it's going to be, bring in any kind of tax incentive money, any grants that we can get, maybe a affordable housing developer, nonprofit or profit. You know, Chelsea Homes, I know Councilmember Crowns just mentioned, who is a for-profit affordable housing developer in our city, and then also Community Housing Works, which we worked with before, nonprofit. You know, partnering with them to find a site, to locate the the funding, and to do whatever we can to get something off the ground. And that will help us in the future. We don't know exactly how it's going to help us right now. It's going to take some of the units off the table that that we're responsible for and and will likely get it done in a way that that is is very much Encinitas way and not necessarily how the private sector is going to do it. So I I definitely support the idea of, in the future, you know, very near future, you know, seeing more options of how we can do that and how we can pinpoint the parcel, you know, come up with the funding that makes it all feasible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowns.
Yeah, and I I certainly am interested in making sure that the city participates as we see the opportunities. And sooner rather than later, I think that it's important, though, that we acknowledge that to get to 100% affordability on a project is going to take more than just offering land. And that there, the the, when the conversation surrounding L7 was raging a few years ago, Community Housing Works and and another developer proposed, if we were to provide them with that land, that they would have a 60-40 split. So 40% affordability was there, and it was a huge number of units. And so
And four or five million gap money.
Yeah, right. So so, you know, the gap is a critical issue. I think that, again, sooner rather than later, we should pursue the conversation about how we might come up with the revenue in order to, you know, fill that gap. And it's it's a critical issue. I've heard plenty of people who would suggest that the way we control our destiny is to be able to participate in more of these projects. And and I think that that's really important. The other comment I I would like to make, I know that I know that HCD has been focused on the city of Encinitas for quite some time. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to share my screen if at all possible. I'm not sure who has to give me the ability to do that. But the I have had the opportunity to look through the archives and found this letter from HCD from March of 1990. So our relationship with HCD way back then included comments that addressed the issue of our voting on upzoning. So in addition, the element lists several potential governmental constraints, et cetera, et cetera, and the requirement for voter approval of density increase. And so we have been a focus of HCD for quite some time. So this is, this is approximately 30 years ago. So I think that the the very difficult process that we went through for Cycle 5 is certainly my hope that in Cycle 6, we can be treated like any other jurisdiction that is taking a fifth-cycle-approved housing element and moving to the sixth cycle. There's, there are a number of jurisdictions that have the right to vote on upzoning. And if those other jurisdictions aren't getting the same kind of challenges in their review and their comment letters, then I think that we're, you know, the the treatment that we're getting is is pretty unfortunate. So my hope is that we can smoothly transition from Cycle 5 to an approved Cycle 6 element. And then we can get on with addressing the issues that are related to any potential no-net-loss requirements.
Thank you for showing that, Tony. I love how you come up with these documents that are so old from the city. It's so great. And it shows also how the, yeah, how the more things change, the more they stay the same, right? I mean, it's
Yes, and there are other letters, and there are comments about homelessness and other things in all of these HCD letters that I've that I've dug up here recently. So the history between HCD and the city of Encinitas is long and storied. And I think that we were essentially put in a box, and we were the ones left holding the bag. And it's been very difficult. I heard a lot about the housing element, and I continue to hear about the housing element update. And it is, I think, for good reason, that people are quite frustrated by the situation. And the last thing I would like to ask is that we remember that this process started out with a general plan update, not just a housing element update, but a general plan update. And I'm afraid that our housing element is a little bit inconsistent with several of the goals and objectives that we have in our overall general plan. So I know we're working on our circulation element, which I think some people want to call the mobility element. I know we don't have a health element, but I think we should have a health element. So at some point, we need to get back to the idea of updating our general plan overall. Certainly, the housing element and land use elements have been the most difficult, and they were focused on for good reason because of the litigation that we were involved in. But we do at some point need to get back to the idea of the general plan being the city's bible, and we need to update the overall general plan.
But we should do the specific plan before we do that general plan.
Yes, yes. And I think we can do two things at once. I think we're we're capable of that. So, yes, I agree.
Well, and also, I mean, to the point of the fact that Well, and also, I mean, to the point of the fact that Encinitas has been in HCD's crosshairs for a long time, and I think Barbara mentioned all these other cities that are going to start, that are already beginning to have problems and will face them with HCD. So it's noteworthy to look to our south, the city of Del Mar, who their 3-2 decision to become compliant with the fifth cycle requirements has now prompted a referendum effort. So they are potentially going to have that go to a referendum in Del Mar, which I think is very interesting. We'll see what happens there as a number of cities face these types of problems. I wanted to ask our city manager, what could be the next steps for us to be pursuing some type of an affordable housing project, like was mentioned, NCTD land or other? How can we move forward with that?
So I think Councilmember Krantz was correct. We should probably bring something back to council to formally discuss before we direct the staff to do some investigation on it. You may wish to have something that's similar to this as kind of a one topic agenda that we could bring back some materials and some information to you.
I think that's a great idea. Does the rest of the council think that's a great idea?
I do. I think, I think it would be good too, Pam, if we contacted one of the affordable housing groups, because I think that they have a whole lot of expertise and information to share with us, and they could really kind of let us know exactly, you know, what value we would bring to the table. Tony said land and money, and so they'll, they'll be able to tell us, you know, what we need.
And, you know, I'm thinking we have the property in L7. I don't think L7's a good piece of property for low income, but I sure think it would be a great one to sell once we've identified something else. So that's another option, Pam.
We also have the burn site that we've talked about a lot.
Oh, the burn site, now that we've got a change on supervisors, I'd really like to start pushing on that. Because that either needs to be, that could be for homeless, that could be for, or it could end, it could start out as homeless tents for people who don't have a place to live. And then you've solved your problem of people being able to just camp in your parks because the state says they can because you have nowhere else.
Well, yeah.
I would love to see us solve that.
I would just want to say that I don't think we should be looking at homelessness tents on that property. And I think it's premature because I think it really, it's going to involve a lot of due diligence with the county to understand how to remediate it. It was a burn site, so I think we should probably keep that off the list for now until we understand, you know, what due diligence has to happen to clean that site up. We wouldn't want to say that we're putting affordable housing on a former burn site, but we should be looking toward other parcels to put this one project that we want to focus on in the next cycle.
But in the meantime, the mayor's got a great idea, which is, we really do, it would be great to start pushing on that burn site. It could be cleaned up, and it's up to the county to pay for it. And instead of, you know, putting the money away and not spending it, they could have cleaned it up a long time ago. So I think it's, I think it's a good idea to push on.
Okay, so there's a lot of ideas for you, city manager. So well, you'll get back to us, and we will talk about this more. Okay, well, let's see, no other hands up, no other comments, no other items on this agenda. Thank you for joining us, Barbara, from afar, which you can't tell it's from afar. And our next meeting will be held on November 18, 2020. So with that, we are adjourned.
Hey, nice to meet all of you.
Bye. You too. Bye-bye.